Perfect. I appreciate everyone joining us. I did get a message from Commissioner Moyer earlier today since she was under the weather and wouldn't be able to attend. Stephen, I know, has had challenges with getting here right at the meeting starts, so we'll see if he comes in here in a few minutes. This is a work session. I appreciate everyone coming a little bit early to cover a work session topic. Based on some communications with the Planning Commission in the past, one of the topics that was desirous to cover was kind of a Planning Commission 101. And so that's what I've started to put together for you in your packet tonight and would like to present to you. This is a work session, so we don't take any actions during a work session. The way I've kind of structured this is kind of an overview and an outline. Patty's gonna get the presentation slides here in just a moment. And those slides are in your packet, too. It's kind of just outlined for the kind of the order of presentation. And I felt it would be best to start at a high level here. We've only got an hour or really 55 minutes because we'll need a little bit of a switch over for the regular meeting. But this is a pretty high-level overview, and it was intended to be high-level to start at the basics and then start digging into a little bit more detailed information. And to kind of jump to the end of it, where I'm intending to leave this off is going over kind of our general meeting procedures, which is the framework for all of the towns' development review applications. And I felt like that was a good logical stopping point because I think there's probably also some more specific interest in other work session topics to cover.
Specific application types?
Oh.
Microphone.
You lost everything. It just clicked down there. I didn't think it was you. Oh, wow. I kicked everything off.
All in one, but I can't find it.
There are two. Two. They're two different.
All right. Sorry about that, and thanks for your patience. We got the technology back and synced up with our Zoom call again. So we didn't have any other discussion while we were on getting our IT situation worked out. So I was just gonna give a high-level overview of kind of where the work session was intended to go, and we'll wrap it up with kind of some specific or our general application procedures. I think the board had, or the commission had asked for some additional work sessions on more specific land use application types to dig into what the Planning Commission can or would consider in terms of conditions of approval, findings of approval for different case types, and I think that would be a more detailed conversation than we could do all in one meeting. So that's the general overview. So I'll proceed with the presentation here. And because it's a work session, I don't mind if you have questions on those slides or on the handouts that we're covering. If you want to interrupt me and ask those questions, I won't make you hold them to the end. This is your work session. I've put together some materials and starting with the basics, but feel free to stop me at any point. And if there's anything that we want to circle back on, I'd be happy to put together more information and bring it back at a later date. So if you can go, it's in your packet, and we're gonna see if we can run the PowerPoint here on the monitor also. But kind of where I wanted to start with this, you're all volunteers that serve on the Planning Commission. And it's a pretty underappreciated board and commission for the amount of work and responsibility that you take on. And so with that kind of general acknowledgement, I've been presented somewhat recently with questions like, well, why do we have a planning commission? And I think it's a really great question. Starting with at the statutory level, Wellington is a statutory town. That's defined in the Colorado Revised Statutes. The state of Colorado adopted those statutes, which are rules and regulations. And it is, Colorado is an enabling state, so the state has powers given to it by the federal government, and the state gives powers to local government, and that's defined in the Colorado Revised Statutes. First slide. So as a statutory town, we are empowered by the state to adopt local rules and regulations that govern our community as long as they're in accordance with the powers enabled to us or granted to us by the state. The way these slides are set up, there's a note in the bottom corner there that says handout number one for this slide. So it's to kind of correlate the attachments to your packet with the slide presentation. And that handout number one that I referenced, I started this kind of packet of information using existing materials and resources. I didn't want to create something brand new for the, you know, first meeting out of the gate or first work session on this topic. Instead, I'm relying on other documents and sources that are already existing and kind of pointing you to where those exist. You can see I've only put together one page on the statutes. It's actually much lengthier than that. If you go and follow the Colorado Revised Statutes online, you can dig into great depth in the planning and zoning enabling statutes. I chose to keep it pretty high level for this particular effort because reading pages and pages of antiquated legalese is not the easiest thing to do, but it's there and available online for anyone if they wanted to follow up on it. But chapter 31, 23, 202 is, 201 is technically where the grant of power starts. But what we've kind of pulled out of those statutes, you can see the title or the section headings here are not sequential. There are sections in between that I didn't copy and paste, but I wanted to pull out kind of the primary elements that the Planning Commission serves. So again, the statutes enable the town of Wellington to create a planning commission. And in those statutes, the commission is tasked with adopting a comprehensive or master plan for the community. So the Planning Commission, one of your primary and first role is the comprehensive plan, which was recently updated in 2021. And you can see in that paragraph, it kind of highlights what that role is, and I won't read it word for word for you, but it is in your packet and it's available online as well. But the creation of that master plan or comprehensive plan is a guiding document. It creates a vision for the community for the future, and it's intended to be broad in nature. And in the statutes, the statutes cover numerous sections or elements that need to be included in the comprehensive plan. So in the last comprehensive plan update in 2021, that effort did include each of those elements that are identified in the statutes that need to be included in a comprehensive plan. In addition to the, I'm going over these fairly quickly, so feel free to stop me. But in addition to the comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission is also created via the state statutes to adopt and enforce zoning regulations and subdivision regulations. So I pulled those sections out to kind of give you at least the first taste of the statutes as to what those were envisioned for local municipalities to adopt regulations. The comprehensive plan serves as the guide for the vision where the community is heading, and the zoning and subdivision regulations are the specific rules that are adopted to achieve the vision. So the comprehensive plan is advisory in nature, and the zoning and subdivision regulations, which are chapter 15 of our land use code, those are the regulatory documents. Those are law at a local level. So one of the other things that I also didn't get included in this packet, I'd be happy to provide it later or it's available online. But in section 31, 23, 301 of the Colorado statutes, it also talks about the more specifics of if a town has adopted zoning regulations, a planning and zoning commission is also required. And they can be overlapping one and the same. We typically just refer to planning commission as the planning commission because it's easier to say than planning and zoning commission, but you will see in various documents throughout the state and local use that reference to planning and zoning commission because the enabling statutes do actually reference both, and they're both required in order for the town to utilize the rules and regulations that we have adopted. So kind of moving on to the next slide, that gives you the basis for why we have a planning commission and where that authority comes from. As a local municipality, Wellington's a statutory community, or statutory town is defined in the statutes. And to create a planning commission, the Board of Trustees has to enable that creation. And we've done that through adopting a municipal code. Within the municipal code, and this is handout number two, the municipal code identifies that we in fact do appoint a planning commission. It makes up, the membership of the commission has to be appointed by the board. You have to serve in a volunteer capacity. It's not a paid position. The planning commission doesn't receive any compensation for your volunteer efforts. And it outlines powers, duties, and responsibilities of the commission, and those powers and duties are reflected directly from the statutes. So the municipal code in your handout number two has the creation and the purpose. Those purpose elements are pulled directly out of the statutes or paraphrased from the statutes just for brevity. But it's reflecting the same roles and responsibilities. And then later on in 2-10-40 for duties and powers, it references the statutory elements that I alluded to a moment ago, as well as the 31, 23, 301, which I forgot to include in your packet, which is specific to the zoning commission aspect of the planning and zoning commission. Absolutely.
Sorry. So under section 2-10-20 for purpose, number six, where it accepts, you know, with the exception that we can't make amendments or changes in the zoning of the town. Is that part of the statute or is that something that's set differently in the town of Wellington? Because I've discovered planning commissions seem to operate differently depending on where you are.
There, so yeah, so the, I can follow up on that with more specific details, but in general, each municipality has the ability to adopt or appoint a planning commission and create it. How they create it, it can be a little bit nuanced. There are statutory provisions for, there are minimums. A planning commission must consist of five members and, you know, or may consist of up to seven. If it's seven, then the statutes provide that the mayor and two other members of the Board of Trustees serve on the planning commission unless adopted otherwise by the local municipality. And so, and that's an example, not specific to the one you asked about, but there are elements that allows the local municipality to make those, the creation and the rules make sense for that community. And in this example, Wellington, as a statutory community, has adopted local rules and regulations within the context of the state enabling statutes that does provide a little bit of local nuance to make things work for Wellington. Is my understanding that number six there, which I'll just kind of reference it for the meeting for the record here, it's referring to the purpose of the planning commission, and number six is other duties and powers incidental to any of the above tasks, one through five, except for making amendments or changes to the zoning of the town, which such powers are expressly reserved for the Board of Trustees. I believe that's a local regulation, and it's probably not unheard of in other communities as well in the sense that the Board of Trustees usually has the final authority to make the change to the zoning map, which is a legal document. Planning commission serves as an advisory capacity to inform and make recommendations to the Board of Trustees for adoption of the official map.
Thank you. I just knew there was nuance, like vastly different depending on what community you're in. So that's why I was curious.
Sure. And not a part of Wellington, but other communities within the state of Colorado are what you would refer to as home rule or charter communities. And in those instances, they have adopted a whole different set of rules that they're operating under a different set of circumstances. As a statutory town, we're limited to the powers granted by the state. So a home rule community will have vastly different constructs. They basically have to recreate all of the same rules as the state within their own local means. All right. So again, in that handout two, handout two was really just the local Board of Trustees for Wellington also creating the planning commission and appointing those members. It does make up that the planning commission for Wellington consists of the seven members. And not all that long ago, the Board of Trustees decided with input from all of our boards and commissions and recommendations from staff and legal counsel that the planning commission, as created by the state statutes that had the mayor and two other board members, did not create enough separation between the advisory capacity of the planning commission and the final decision of the Board of Trustees. And the decision was made to have the 100% of the membership of the planning commission be separated from the Board of Trustees membership. So that was a fairly recent change that Wellington made under those powers granted by the state to create its membership terms. So any question, any other questions on the local authority to create the planning commission and appoint its members? Pretty plain on that piece. The next slide for municipal code, I highlighted chapter 15. Chapter 15 is the land use code as adopted by the town. This was recently updated in 2022. It was, the land use code are the rules and regulations, the local law that affect the visions of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan has to be in place in order to adopt local zoning regulations. And because we've checked those boxes as a community, we have the chapter 15 land use code. The land use code, and there's actually a reference to it in, I think in chapter two, it mentions, chapter two of the municipal code talks about chapters 16 and 17 of this code. I don't know if anyone caught that discrepancy, but that's, we didn't go back and clean up chapter two to reference that we updated chapter 15 of the land use code, which took the place of 16 and 17. So I've noted that as a cleanup item in the future, but the effect is that the land use code is in chapter 15, which used to be chapters 15, 16, and 17. We just kind of consolidated it all, consolidated all of it into one document instead of having it multiple places. But so I highlighted chapter 15 here because it is the rules of the town, and it also provides a lot of the nuts and bolts of what the planning commission looks at. It outlines our zoning districts. It outlines how to subdivide properties. It has elements regarding the construct and the purpose of the rules and regulations. That's all of our application procedures included in it. And I chose not to print the whole chapter 15 because you have that available online and your, and your other resources for your planning commissioner binders. But I wanted to highlight how that chapter 15 affects the planning commission's roles and responsibilities. And one of our previous meetings and the communications, the question was asked, can we provide a table of the different roles or different processes that the planning commission is involved in and where there's a recommendation versus a final decision? And hopefully, that table exists in our land use code. It's section 15-2-30. An advanced slide. Thanks. So this table comes out of the land use code that was adopted in 2022. And the way it's organized, it identifies the different application types that are in the far left column. And then across the top are the headings for the different steps and decision-making authorities. So under the, it's right in the middle for the column for planning commission. You can see in that column, there's, there are Rs and there are Ds. R stands for review. That's where you're reviewing applications in an advisory capacity, and you make a recommendation that goes on to the Board of Trustees for the final decision. And the Ds are where the planning commission has the final authority for making the final decision on that application type. You can see that the, as it wraps on to page two, the headings got lost, but the D, the only D in the planning commission column is for site plans. So a site development plan is the only final decision that the planning commission makes on application types. And the planning commission serves in a review capacity on nearly all other types of applications except for things that go to the Board of Adjustment. The, or administrative decision. I guess that's, that's a staff matter. But I also wanted to point out, and that's not captured in this table because this is a procedure table for application types. The other final decision that the planning commission makes is the comprehensive plan. The statutory, the Enabling Act that gives the planning commission the power to adopt a comprehensive master plan, that power rests solely with the planning commission. The Board of Trustees, as a practice, has typically adopted a resolution supporting that the town has a comprehensive plan that was created by the planning commission, but the power to adopt the comprehensive plan is the planning commission's role and responsibility. Just not on this table because it wasn't an application procedure. Does that overall overview on the procedure table make sense? Are there any questions? Okay. I would also point out that some of the other columns in this table, Board of Adjustments, of course, is a little bit more specific to application types that don't follow the normal procedures for requirements on development. Typically, you see that as a variance. Variance requests come to the Board of Adjustments, not the planning commission. Those requests are, I need relief from the strict application of the rules because I'm experiencing a hardship. So planning staff takes those applications to the Board of Adjustments rather than planning commission. Planning commission, under normal circumstances, those applications would come in. They don't have any hardships, and you would just be applying the normal rules adopted in chapter 15. The other columns on there, our land use code does have provisions for administrative procedures. They're pretty limited in nature. They're defined in the land use code as if these thresholds are met and these review criteria can be accomplished, then staff has the authority to approve those application types administratively. These are pretty limited in nature, but things like sign permit applications, a lot line adjustment. We've done one of those recently where we moved the property line between the same, same common ownership and moved five feet or 10 feet to accomplish their desire for selling the property. And it didn't change the accesses or context or anything else for our application. So it met all the criteria for administrative review. So there's a little bit of that in here as well. And of course, your planning staff reviews all application types and prepares materials that come to the planning commission, the Board of Trustees, the Board of Adjustment for the various application types.
I have a question again.
Of course.
Back to the variances for the Board of Adjustment. So is that a, like, case-by-case basis of whether they come in front of us before the Board of Adjustments? Or is it typical that they would go to the Board of Adjustments before they came for a site plan review?
You know, there's no prescribed rule as to which one happens first. Many of the cases that, at least in my career that I've seen on like a new development, sometimes they need both a variance request to be considered and a site plan review for that development proposal. Sometimes there's other processes included as well. Conditional use could be included depending on the application type. And so one of the things that is tricky in those applications is when you require, or when the, when the development proposal requires multiple processes, and the processes are heard by different boards and commissions, they don't all meet on the same night. And so one has to go before the other. Usually it's based on timelines for public hearings, or sometimes it's based on when the applicant submits their application for which one. They might have reasons for choosing one over the other, such as if I don't get a variance, then there's no point in spending money to draw up a site plan and go through that process. So they want to satisfy one before the other. There is some nuance on the applicant side as to which one makes sense for them to guide their process, but there's no prescription as to which one has to happen first. Sometimes it's just whichever one comes in and both are required, or three may be required depending on the case to get the full development approvals. You're welcome. Any other questions on the procedures table? Okay, so the next slide in your presentation, we included, it's one of a handout that you see. Can we go forward or backwards?
I went forward. Because I took the slide back.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right. Gotcha. Okay. So chapter 15 land use code. What we highlight on this slide and it references handout number four. This is the general application procedures. I felt this was important to cover as part of the 101 because the question is often asked, what does the planning commission review and how does it get to us? So what we've included here is reference to article two, application procedures, because that section defines the various steps of the review processes and the roles of the reviewers and how it gets to the planning commission. All application types go through planning staff. We're, the planning department is tasked with kind of that application intake, and we often refer cases to different reviewers based on the application type and the needs of that review. So the planning staff is responsible for meeting with the applicants, understanding what the nature of their request is. We take their application, and sometimes it takes a couple of meetings to get to a formal application. Once we receive the application from an applicant, planning staff reviews it for completeness. We do a completeness check on those, and we refer it out to other, other town departments. It might require school, school district review. It might require county review. It might require review from special agencies. And planning staff distributes those plans for everyone, every agency to review and comment on. We also schedule public hearings for items that require a public hearing, like zoning, annexation, subdivision plaits will require a hearing. Once the application is complete and the information has been reviewed and comments received, planning staff will schedule that public hearing. We post notices in the newspaper. We require signs on the site. And we, of course, do our agendas and post those in public places. This town planning staff prepares the staff reports, and we take comments from those other agencies to supplement our reports. And then we bring that report to the planning commission with a recommendation for this application is ready for approval or there are conditions of approval that need to be satisfied. Occasionally, our recommendation is that we can't support this particular application type. Planning staff does try very hard to have those conversations with applicants. If there's a reason why we can't support it, we try to be fair to the applicant that we don't want to put anyone in a position where you're not meeting the requirements and we're putting you in front of a public board or commission for review. We try to answer those questions before it reaches a public meeting. And sometimes we can't come to resolution on that, and we bring an application. Sometimes the recommendation is that we can't support it, that they're adamant that they want to continue their request. So in fairness, we don't get to tell them, no, you can't have your request heard. We bring those to the planning commission or the other boards and commissions as needed with a recommendation. Sometimes it's not favorable. Most often it is because we've worked with our applicants to make sure that we've answered all the questions. And I think that gets into your handouts. Can you cycle? How many slides are left in there, Patty? Those are the tables we talked about. Oh, right. Okay. Thanks. Thanks. So the public hearing slide, you can see that looks pretty familiar to, or similar to the handouts or the attachments we include in a lot of your public hearing items. It just goes over the, the general process for conducting a public hearing, which includes introductions, application or applicant presentations, public comment period, and then closing the hearing, and then the commission discusses and deliberates that item before making a decision. The reason I included this is that one of the primary roles of the planning commission in hearing application types that require public hearings is to solicit public feedback. This commission, over the years, has conducted a lot of public hearings from comprehensive plan adoption, land use code adoption, zoning map adoption, which was also updated not that long ago, in April. And we conduct public hearings on land use applications like annexations, zoning requests for change of zoning classification and subdivision plaits. So those are also vacations, which we don't do as many of here, but we would do that as well for a vacation of a road or easement if that were desired. So the public hearing process is a big part of why we have a planning commission. It enables the community to be heard on the various rules and regulations that are being considered and the changes to land use patterns that affect neighbors, residents, and neighborhoods so that they have an opportunity to provide their input. The planning commission can take that input and change its recommendation or change its approval with conditions, ask the applicant to address those comments and bring it back with a revision, all those things. But the public hearing process is very important in the planning commission's roles and responsibilities because it's impossible for any individual to know every single nuance of what's going on out in the community. And our neighbors and residents have different viewpoints that they bring that information to us to consider in their request for the approval. So that certainly is one of the roles and responsibilities is to hear those, those public comments and address that information as best as we can with the other resources we have available to us. I think the, the last slide then is the typical review process, which I started into a little bit earlier. So I won't. So I won't go back through each step. But this page or this slideshow goes through a little bit further into all the way through building permit applications and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So, in general, your town planning department is involved in an application for a development proposal from the initial proposal, all the way through review, all the way through to the building division is under the planning department and issuance of building permits, review of commercial plans. And finally inspections for planning inspections for the site to make sure that parking landscape and et cetera was all installed as required. And the building division for inspections and the issuance of a certificate of occupancy when the final structure is complete and ready to occupy. So, the one thing I did want to highlight on this slide though is that between steps four and five, this is presented in a very basic and linear fashion, but reviews are not always linear. There's a clear process for a review, but it's very frequent that a review goes through multiple review cycles. When planning staff takes an application for the first time and it is complete, meaning that it's got all the elements that are needed for review, oftentimes the review itself generates comments that we give back to the applicant with comments, questions, references to this is a code requirement of the town's land use code. It might have, you know, a downtown business might have specific requirements to satisfy for the architectural design criteria for Cleveland Avenue. And if those material pieces of information weren't in the original packet, sometimes the comment is this was missing and you need to complete this before you can submit for re-review. And subdivision plaits, some of the more complicated ones, might go through three, four rounds of review with public works and engineering for utility design infrastructure layout. So, that four and five or between four and five, there can be multiple review cycles on an application before it moves on to five where staff is generating the staff report that comes before the planning commission. That's an important nuance there. Oh, well, perfect. I got my page packet, I got in the wrong order. I was flipping back and forth. So, my apologies for kind of being out of order, but the last two slides there go back to kind of the roles and responsibilities. And these pages, this slide and the next slide, talk about the role of planning staff, which I've covered. I won't reiterate on and the role of the planning commission, which kind of high level overviews. These pages came out of your planning commissioner resource binder. I think it's it's a one pager or a two pager and that's that's where these slides came from. It's again, it's an existing document that you already have in your binders. So we were trying not to recreate new material for you, but present it in a way where you can reference where those sources are are found and located. So I said I wouldn't reiterate these slides, so I won't. Are there, are there questions that the planning commissioners have regarding what's been presented so far? Okay. Are there questions about the review process? And I specifically included in handout number four, it's the general application procedures. And I felt like if there were questions about applications in general, that this might be the the best place to start for those because these procedures affect every application that comes in. Then if there's more specific conversations around specific application types, I'd be happy to dig into those tonight or at a future work session as directed by the commission. There's no way I got everything covered in one one shot.
What can we work, what can we look forward to on the next time we talk about this? Because there's got to be more.
Well, I think, I mean, that I can prepare materials based on direction from the commission. I think it it could be that the application types, digging into more specifics on how a site plan is reviewed by staff and how that comes before the planning commission. What are your findings for approval on those application types? And what latitude does the planning commission have to grant approvals, attach conditions of approval? If there's a, you know, if a recommendation is to deny or the planning commission finds a reason to deny, what would that be based on? I can definitely bring back more information along those lines. And I feel like if that were the the request of the commission, probably site plan might be an important one because we deal with that primarily or that's one of the primary application types of growing communities. I think that subdivision plaits would be another good one to bring back for a kind of a case by case because we do see those more frequently here in Wellington and I anticipate there'll be more in the future. Re-zoning would be another good one as a general procedure to go over that application type because anytime you're doing a quasi judicial proceeding with public hearings over what are the uses allowed for that property, it's a good one to be brushed up on and have clear guidance on do's and don'ts. And I'd be happy to bring back any other application types to go over in more detail.
Yeah, I think that's more the meat and the potatoes of what we're trying to get out of this good overview. Like that's a nice way to to funnel everything down into those specific applicant requests. But I think that next one, I would say you're spot on. More specifics on each of those application types is is what we're after. Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Be happy.
How the P U D works in conjunction with like the comprehensive plan and the growth management area and the zoning map. Just to better understand like when someone's coming before us and they have a plan. And it's not necessarily going to completely align with whatever we've envisioned that could possibly happen. How do we, how do we judge that? I guess is better, right? Like other than just, oh, yeah, that looks good.
Yeah, something about that in like a subdivision plat.
Yeah.
Request or something like that.
Yep.
Yep, cool.
Be happy to do that. And I keep looking behind me at the clock on the wall. There's a few minutes left too, and I think that would be a reasonable topic if you wanted to dig into it a little bit. And then if you want to inform what staff can bring back in terms of materials for that. Because we did actually print out, we were going to put it on the wall as a big map, but our plotter is not printing that large format at the moment. So we gave you some eleven by seventeens of the future land use map. It's page seventy seven of the comprehensive plan available on our website as well. And I think it's, this really ties back to kind of the purpose of the planning commission too and creation of the comprehensive plan itself. Within the the comprehensive plan, there are various elements, one of which is the future land use element. The future land use map is is a map and it's accompanied by text and recommendations throughout the plan. But it it kind of is the the snapshot guide of where the community believes it would be heading in the next twenty years. And so the future land use map identifies the town's growth management area. It identifies the general pattern of expected development over a period of time. It identifies general land use categories that then further inform the zoning regulations, the zoning district classifications in your land use code. And so, in reviewing a new development application, a lot of the findings for approval identified in your applications procedures reference back to one of those findings has to be that there's that there's consistency with the town's adopted comprehensive plan. And that means multiple things because there are different sections of the comprehensive plan. The basic start is the future land use map is the proposed uses prescribed by the by the application. Are those consistent with the land uses envisioned within the the comprehensive plan? If it is, you've checked that box and you move on to your zoning code and the more specific details for those findings of approval. If however, there's a discrepancy between the comprehensive plans identified future land use and the application that's being proposed, they might also be applying for an amendment to the comprehensive plan. They might feel that there is good reason and justification to request a different use than identified on the comprehensive plan. And there's a process identified for how to amend the comprehensive plan. We need to look at, and again, planning commission would look at, are those changes to the plan reasonable in terms of where the the plan and the town would be heading for the next twenty years? A lot of times you see those types of applications on kind of a fringe area where admittedly comprehensive plan is looking long outside our or within our growth management area, but outside the town limits. And it's not possible to predict every single property line boundary conclusion from now until forever. So there are procedures for, if it's on that kind of right on the line between a commercial use and residential use and the applicant is requesting something specific to one of those categories and they feel like their property should be included in the other. There's a path for how to request and make those proposed changes. The comprehensive plan also includes a street master plan. It includes recommendations for our downtown, recommendations for pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, general recommendations regarding utility infrastructure. And so all of those elements are are fair game in looking at the future land use patterns. There's additional recommendations and in the executive summary of the comprehensive plan, there's a a pretty meaty table of goals and and or goals and policies of the town. And those goals and policies were identified throughout our comprehensive plan process and updates with a lot of feedback from the community as to what was important to our residents, our businesses. And those goals and policies are outlined as a means of guiding new growth and development. So, one of the things that we require our applicants to do is to provide a statement of conformance with the comprehensive plan. And most frequently, they look at the future land use map and they look through the goals and policies. If we're a business looking to locate in Wellington, have we accomplished the goals and policies through our development proposal to meet the objectives of the the community's comprehensive plan? And most often you'll find a handful of goals and policies that are satisfied, some that are relevant and some occasionally you find that didn't didn't hit the mark. And it's not a must check all boxes or majority, it's general reasonableness. And the planning commission can make a recommendation on how to change that development proposal in ways that further the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Or you might find that that goal and policy is out of date or it's no longer applicable based on other decisions and we need to amend the comprehensive plan accordingly. Or maybe that goal's been satisfied and it's no longer applicable. There's not a hard and fast rule as to what you have to accomplish because it is an advisory document. But the the general procedure is to ensure that the development application proposals are not in contrast to the comprehensive plan, but are generally working harmoniously to achieve the goals and visions of the overall comprehensive plan. Is that a basic start?
Yeah.
Happy to elaborate on that in a future work session and bring back additional materials as needed to further answer that question.
I think for purposes of the next time around, we just, you guys want to go over that table real quick and just kind of identify which ones we want to hear more of? I don't think you need to dive into every one of them because there are some that really don't. Now, they either skip over us or they go a different route or administratively or handled before they ever come to the planning commission. Yeah, absolutely.
It's always an issue that there's something that comes up that we struggle with doing.
Say if we end up. If we end up having to break it into multiples, start with site plan. And I don't, I don't know if that would take a full hour to go through the whole site plan review process and.
Yeah, traditionally, when I've done work sessions on like a specific application type, it doesn't usually take a full hour unless there's like specifically like digging into, I can bring example site plans and kind of walk you through what planning, what planning staff looks at and how we look at it. We're happy to do that so you can see what level of detail your professional staff dig into before we bring you that recommendation. I've had planning commissions in the past that wanted that explanation for what staff was looking at and why we don't bring every single document in in your packet to you. I think that's that's actually a fair, got a few minutes, a fair question that's worth answering now. Sometimes I get questions around, oh, the the land use code requires, you know, this and this and this to be submitted as part of the application. Why doesn't that come to the planning commission? And the reason for that is some of the requirements that we require for reviewing an application are engineering plans and profiles, stormwater design, lighting standards. There's, there's a number of things that that are a very technical review that we don't expect volunteer members of the planning commission to review three hundred page documents on soils reports to know if that soil supports the type of construction activity. We don't expect you to be able to read the nomographs for a transportation planning study or a T I S, traffic impact study. We have staff that review those various documents and if there's something that's a red flag or doesn't meet our standards, we give that information back to the applicant and work with them until they meet our standards. And then we bring back a recommendation for the planning commission that they've satisfied our standards for traffic, engineering design, stormwater, soils, et cetera. And a lot of times the, those documents are, especially engineering documents, are are stamped and sealed by current licensed professional engineers. And that's their opinion of this, based on my review of this information. I'm putting my professional seal on this that this is acceptable under general engineering standards. And it's not the town's staff to say you're wrong. It's they're saying, I'm the professional engineer and I've evaluated every piece of this, so I'm taking the liability to say this is going to work. Our engineers might review it and might have questions and feedback, but at the end of the day, the design engineer that stamps it is the one who takes responsibility for that document. And so we're collecting those documents. We're ensuring that they're there, that they meet all the town standards and that the development application is is complete on the staff side of things. But we don't bring every single one of those documents before the planning commission expects you to review and make recommendations on them. You do have a professional staff of planners, engineers, and we do hire occasionally outside counsel or legal review on certain topics or specialized engineering review like traffic studies. We actually contract with a P T O E, professional traffic operations engineer, I forget the O. I'll have to go back and brush up on my abbreviations. But professional traffic engineers that specialize in in transportation planning and traffic design, we actually contract that out because our in-house engineers have other things on their plate and they don't have that particular expertise to do a detailed analysis on that. So, the same is true for for other types of applications for specific details where we might want to get an outside opinion of that. So, I hope that kind of answers the the short part of that question on the application procedures and the materials that staff reviews as a staff level and what we bring back to the planning commission as a recommendation that that those requirements have been satisfied.
Could I answer your question on the traffic thing? Houston, in light of like some of the public comments that we've gotten. Some of the public comment that we've gotten on other things that we've reviewed, like particularly like on the east side or whatever. Is it possible for you guys to include like a high level kind of breakdown summary of whatever that that traffic impact study says more for, I mean, for our information, but really more for the dissemination of information to the public because maybe that would help answer some of those questions that people have? Do you, does that make sense?
Kind of the providing an overview of what were the final recommendations of the professional traffic.
Right, based on certain standards that those engineers use to determine those things so that they understand that, no, we're not going to put a stoplight at every intersection or, you know, I mean, I'm being facetious, but you know what I'm saying.
An extreme example, but one well taken. I mean, there's not a, not every intersection warrants a traffic signal. It might require an acceleration or deceleration lane or a striping modification or signage or reduced speed limits or some other factor like that, signage, do not enter, things like that. So I'm just pulling some examples from, I say recent, but not, but no longer that recent examples. But certainly that's part of the recommendation and the that goes into the staff reports. If there's a requirement for turn lanes or other, you know, public improvements that need to be considered, we require on subdivision plaits the dedication of right of way to accomplish those improvements and that would be in your recommendations. Some minor things like like do not enter signage or or speed limits and things like that often just show up on the design plans and staff wouldn't accept the design plans if they hadn't satisfied our requirements or the recommendations of the traffic study. So, you know, big purpose recommendations will be included in that report and some of the minor details might not make it, but we'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
Well, and I think it's in part like not because we don't trust the information that you're getting. I mean, I certainly do. You guys do a great job. But like in an effort to maybe inform people a little bit more, if that makes sense, like I think we're in a time where people are, take short bits and things like that, and if the information's not there, they may. And if the information's not there, they may, they jump to an assumption. And I hope is as people choose to be involved, fingers crossed, that they'll start to learn like these are the standards or this is why this is this way. And if that information is consistently included in the staff recommendations or whatever, that that would start to stick a little bit. And for us too, you know, so that we're learning more, just for a better understanding and understanding what we're looking at and what we're approving and why. Because it's not unheard of for somebody to ask you in the middle of all kinds of crazy.
Grocery store and.
Oh, yeah, that's my favorite place.
Um, we'll absolutely try and do that in those reports. I, I, it's difficult for staff to predict where the questions are going to come from and what subject matter will be questioned. But we can certainly provide the, in the recommendations, whether it satisfies town criteria or not. Um, if it's accepted by engineering, as being engineering criteria, we'll include that note in the, in the staff reports that it satisfies the criteria.
Yeah, I guess I'm speaking specifically to the traffic thing because it's a hot topic.
Right, the traffic is an engineering topic that will set, say whether it satisfies engineering criteria or not. And there's a lot of opinions out there, but the, the town engineer makes the final call on traffic engineering.
Okay.
So, but we'll include the recommendations for modifications to a design plan or a plat based on those recommendations.
Okay.
And town staff is always available if there are questions from the public, planning commissioners. If you get those questions, you can always refer those individuals to town staff to help answer those questions. We're happy to sit down and go over the details with individuals, help them understand the whys. Um, that's hard for planning commissioners to do in the grocery store or other settings. Um, but town staff can set up meetings with those individuals to answer the questions, for sure.
Yeah, um, I think just for your purposes, moving forward for the next one, maybe start with site plan.
Okay.
And just kind of dive into that and then maybe when that one's over, let's make sure before that work session is over, we give you some guidance on the next list of the site, like I, I feel like everything in entitlements, the rezone, the P U D, the annexations, that might all fit into an hour. Those generally aren't overbearingly complicated, so maybe we can double up or triple up on a few within the next work session after the site plan and then just figure out a schedule to get through all of those.
Okay.
Fair.
I, I think so, until I start to try to put together and then I'll, I'll see how the materials come together, but.
Site plan obviously is the hot one, so let's do that first and then we can figure out a good way to approach the rest.
We'll see if that, if we can accomplish that for the February meeting. Does this, does this five thirty um work session work fairly well? And obviously we had pretty good attendance, I know one was um, has had an illness. So we'll proceed in that manner for five thirty for the February work session.
Okay, works.
Perfect, thanks for the guidance.
Yep, gives them a quick minute or two break or?
Yep, and we, we do from a s- uh staff standpoint because we need to switch the recording over for the regular meeting. Um, so.
Okay.
If we have a couple of minutes, do that.
Yeah, we can do five.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you.